Five, I'd like to go ahead and call the Budget Workshop to order. Before we jump in and we hear about any agenda modifications, just a personal point, I want to thank staff. You continuously do a great job. I know this is a year-long exercise. You're always working on the budget, and this is the next step in the process, and we certainly do appreciate it. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's get right into citizen input on the Budget Workshop. Mr. Treasurer Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have five or six speakers. The first is Judy Mandrell. I'll ask speakers to come to the microphone facing the commission, and you will each have three minutes for remarks. I'll give you a heads up when you're at about two and a half, and then let you know when your three minutes have expired. If you give your name and address, you may begin.
Good evening. I'm Judy Mandrell. Address is 1911 Chalkibin Court here in Tallahassee, Florida. I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I was hoping to go, like, third, but since I'm starting off, that's okay. I want to thank you. I present to you a proposal, and you have it before you as I present this. I am looking to propose $75,000 for a Family Affairs Program. The program will consist of working with families, children and families ages five to 12, and their parents. One of my desires, what I see in working with my daycare, they're six weeks to 12-years-old. My after-school is six weeks, five to 12, and my summer camp is five to 12. And what I'm seeing is we do a lot for our teens, we do a lot for the parents. One of the things that I notice is if we can put things in place at a younger age, starting at age five, four perhaps, and getting the families back to the old-fashioned, round-the-table talking and communicating with each other, I believe that we could prevent some of the crime before it gets started. We got to get them to the table, we got to get the parents to look at the children, got to get the parents to talk to the children, we got to get the children to talk to the parents. We got to make things happen, and I believe that if we can do it at an early age, Dream Builders, Greatness Center, that's what we focus on. Sometime at eight, when they're teenagers, we're fighting against the grind, but if we can mold, get them in their most formative years, which is age from birth to eight or nine-years-old, we can make a difference. And I know doing this will help curtail crime, it will put safety in our neighborhood, it will help a whole lot because family now are talking. Some of the things that they're in competition against, cell phones, game boards, and parents are busy. What we propose is to go into the houses, go into the homes, and sit down and help the parents talk with each other, teach them how to communicate and play with their young children. We got to put playing back into the, in the home. We got to get where they're spending time, put the phone away and talk to them. In kindergarten, children are having problems. I have a daycare. Some kids come in and they're screaming and hauling and just spending time with those children. We practice this in my daycare, we practice this in my summer camp, but we want to take it on a larger ram now. We want to take them out to dinner. We want to help provide dinner. If they don't have a dining room table, we want to put one in there to teach them some things, not just TV, but really getting in there, changing the heart. And I know by the time little Johnny get 13, if we can start at age four or five, by the time little Johnny get 13, he may very well be a great entrepreneur, and we want to, we want to do that. We want to provide that time for him. So I want to thank you all so very much for listening to that. My contact information is in there. I'd be more than happy to sit down with you all individually, but I want to thank you for this time, for hearing it. I know for a fact that this program will help curtail a whole lot of things, that dysfunctional things that's going on in our neighborhood. I know that for a fact. I work with the children and their parents every single day. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners.
Thank you, Pastor Mandrell.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stanley Sims, and then Monique Ellsworth.
Pastor Sims.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. When she was talking about the dinner table, it took me back when the former commission started the roundtable, and I was privileged, Mr. Matt Lowden, to be invited to a house over in Bitten Hills off of Randolph Circle. And I did a little background on the individual that me and my wife would be sharing dinner with for the very first time, and his name was Randy Hanna, professor at FSU. And rest her soul, Nancy Calhoun, I believe, was there. But in that meeting, he pulled me to the side, and we shared a moment of truth, and we were talking about gun control, and he said to me, he said to Stanley, he said, "The reason why we white people want our guns, because when trouble comes, we don't think that the police is going to get here in time." And I responded to him, I said, "Well, we as black people don't want the police to come because we don't know what going to go down when they get here." My point is a lack of trust. Last night about nine o'clock, I received an email from Mr. Lavine, a couple of hours after another death has occurred in our city. And the way he has stonewalled and plagued with my civil liberties is very disturbing. The same civil liberties that he protects. Now, I'm for gay marriage, but this commission, a couple of years ago, passed the ordinance that we do not discriminate for sexual preference. Why I mention that? Because the last meeting he scheduled with me, he canceled because him and his partner was in Tel Aviv, Egypt, over a $50,000 pay increase that he received. And I'm still fighting for fair wage jobs here in Tallahassee. And we can't discriminate against him. And he comes up, Mayor, and I'm going to, I haven't sent it to you, and I don't want to give this commission the impression that you are not doing a phenomenal job. Yes, you are.
You have two and a half minutes.
The wall in City Hall is coming down, and I thank each and every one of you, because the parameters and the barriers that he has placed to prevent and to delay our program is embarrassing. I've touched base with a lot of you all, not with you, Ms. Bryant, and that's because we ain't ready for you yet. This community knows you, and we're ready for those questions that we think you're going to ask us.
Excuse me, you're at three.
But I'm asking this commission to keep doing what you're doing, and Mayor, I ask that you would look into this email that I'm going to forward to you of some of the phony reasons that he had to delay and to not meet with me. This is going on now two years.
Reverend Sims, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Monique Ellsworth, and then Pastor Rudy Ferguson.
Good afternoon. My name's Monique Ellsworth. I'm at 2650 Municipal Way. I'd like to begin by thanking you, Mr. Mayor, and City Commissioners, city staff. I, I'm the Executive Director of CESC, Inc. It stands for Connecting Everyone with Second Chances. The funding request that will be discussed today is in support of the Carney Center, which is one of our four programs, and I just wanted to, like, have the opportunity of three minutes to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. Last year, we were calculating some of our numbers, and we served 2,800 unique individuals from our community who, at some point during the year, were experiencing homelessness. 2,800 unique individuals who were needing food that day, living with food and housing insecurities, looking for ways to get re-engaged in workforce, to find affordable housing options, and to move on to become productive citizens in whatever capacity that they're able to do that. It's not without partnership with the city, with the county, and countless other funders in our community that this is possible. It's a shared success for everyone. In June, we're going to be celebrating our 1,000,000th meal being served at the Carney Center. These are meals that are provided to anyone in the community, regardless if you're actually staying overnight with us. We have about 375 people that stay every evening with us, but a foot traffic of between 500 and 600 people every day because of the social services we provide onsite, and those continue to evolve. Our most recent one is a stronger partnership with Appalachia Center, doing their mental health services, and they're actually bringing onsite telehealth, so they're doing tele-mental health to do medication adjustments for individuals that are staying with us, which is incredible. So I just wanted to make sure that I brought to you some information about what happens at the Carney Center. Myself and the CESC CFO are here at the meeting today, so while you are discussing the funding request, we're here in case there are any questions that come up. But I just did want to part by saying thank you for what you've done to support us the last five years, and we look forward to partnering and serving with you for the next five years.
Thank you.
Next is Rudy Ferguson, and then Will Crowley.
Pastor Ferguson, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, County, City Administrators. Want to say thank you for this opportunity. If it's all right with you, I would like to definitely thank Ms. Ashley Edwards for the great work she did in providing for a new season of nonviolence. We had a great turnout for our season of nonviolence picnic there at the John G. Rowley Park, and she played a major, major role in assisting us with all of our endeavors. So I wanted to take that time to say thank you to her and Ms. Cynthia Barbara for all of the efforts they've done. To my point, and I want to say, I'm here to discuss the Dream Center of Tallahassee one more time. Before you, you will see a one-pager in regards to the Dream Center. In the last couple of years, the City of Tallahassee has assisted us in the Griffin Heights neighborhood, Greater Frenchtown community, and we are certainly appreciative of all the efforts you have done. As you notice, we have increased with gun violence, so we have picked up in our programs to add gang resistance education to our program. We may say there's no gangs in Tallahassee, but make no mistake about it, we do have certain circling around in Tallahassee, and we feel they need to be educated in regards to how to avoid and also how to stay away from, from gang violence as well as gun violence. We also have included in there, like we did last year, youth education, I'm sorry, Youth Anger Management 101. We have partnered with, in the last eight years, we've partnered with the Department of Juvenile Justice, where we serve, have served almost 500 of their youth throughout these years. That's a staggering number to know that most of these kids that are on probation or in diversion program are coming from the Griffin Heights neighborhood and Greater Frenchtown community. That's not good. I live there. That means there's a problem. So what I'm asking this commission to look into, again, to thank you for the $15,000 that you had given us last year, but we are asking for an increase because it's going to take just that and some more in order to do what we're doing over there. So I'm asking for $50,000. I've outlined a budget that I've sent to you all already. I hope and trust and pray, because I am a Reverend, I pray, that it's befitting and satisfactory to your likings, and I hope that this continues to play a major role in our community. So again, I say thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, and also City Administrators. Thank you so kindly.
Thank you.
Will Crowley is our next speaker, and I have no other speakers at this time. If there are those who wish to speak, there's a speaker form like this on the table, actually just outside, that you can bring to my attention.
Mr. Crowley, good to see you, sir.
Hey, how are you? My name is Will Crowley. I live at 326 West Eighth Avenue. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to learn more about the city's budget, very excited to learn about the process, also very thankful for the efforts to increase transparency around budgetary issues. At the same time, I don't believe transparency in itself is enough. I am very hopeful that we can, as a city with your leadership, work towards a more participatory process as well that goes beyond transparency and actually puts residents of the city in the decision-making seat. I think that we've heard some great proposals so far, and I really think the folks making some of these proposals, proposals should have a literal seat at this table, not just speaking to you all from behind a podium. And more importantly, I think plenty of folks who are not able to be here, and I understand this is an ongoing process, plenty of those folks as well should also have a literal seat at this table. Again, I don't want to sound unthankful for the transparency. I think it's great, but it's not enough. I think that there are a lot of interests that, for structural reasons, are not represented at this table, and I, I look forward to seeing those changes made. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mayor.
Do we have anybody else from the public that's here that would like to speak, that hasn't had a chance to fill out a card? Seeing none, let's move right into discussion. 3.01, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'll be brief in my comments. I want to make sure we have adequate time for the presentation. We look forward to your feedback. This is the last check-in. As you know, we've had numerous meetings where you've provided guidance to us regarding the development of next year's budget, but also an opportunity to discuss where we are so far in this fiscal year 19 budget. And those are the two themes of today. So we want to provide you, Robert Wiggan, our Director of Resource Management, will provide you, we'll walk through the presentation, and we'll check in how we're doing with the fiscal year 2019 budget halfway. That exercise has proven very productive for us from a management point of view, I think probably helpful to you as you understand where we are, and also to the public, just so we keep everybody up to date of how we're progressing. We also want to visit some final assumptions for our fiscal year 20 development. You've given us a lot of direction already, which is very helpful, and we're preparing to present to you a proposed balanced budget, balanced budget. We would do that at the end of May for a June 5 workshop and final discussion, so today I think will be very important in the final development of that. We're asking that you accept today's update at the conclusion of the presentation and discussion, and again, seeking your feedback on these assumptions. So just with that frame, I'd like to turn it over to Robert and ask him to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Reese. Mayor, City Commissioners, appointed officials, thank you for your time this afternoon. I see we do have a overhead presentation and a presentation in front of you. The, you know, our goal today is to fourfold. We would want to talk about the fiscal year 19 quarterly update. We have finished the second quarter of the fiscal year and want to give you a status update on the 14 operating funds. The fiscal year 20 operating budget, key assumptions, as City Manager Goode mentioned, we want to walk through those one more time, also demonstrate how those appear in a balanced budget pro forma at the current time. Then we want to talk about some other operating budget assumptions that have come to our attention most, most recently, and get your recommendations on those additional items. And then lastly, we'll talk about next steps. We're coming to a point where we'll have a June and July budget workshop and agenda item. Those are key dates in that we then need to let the property appraiser know that we've committed to the 4.1 mills, and then in September, we'll have two public hearings to adopt the budget as a, as a final point for the start of the fiscal year October 1st. Since we last met in February after the first quarter, there's been a number of great areas for progress. Highlighted a few of those in this slide. They cross public safety, infrastructure investment, economic development, and quality of life, all those areas that you identified as priorities. We're all well-familiar with these, have celebrated them at times, and talk proudly of the work that your leadership has, has brought us to, and then our hard work of staff has, has also engaged in. Regarding the second quarter update, what we see is that you've, you've got a graphic here that, that's been very successful in communicating and sharing where we are with the 14 operating budget. Each of those is a complex, unique fund in and of itself. We want to provide a quick reference guide so that you see where we are focusing our attention, so that the public can engage when they have questions or concerns in those areas that, that we identify as, as needing attention, and then that, that is a springboard for communication about where we go next. The last thing we want to do is progress through a fiscal year with a set of assumptions and at that, get to the end of the fiscal year and have any surprises that also that impacts the next fiscal year. Very simply, we've, we've identified 12 of the 14 funds as being in a green state. We've looked at what their six months of expenditures and revenues are, feel very comfortable that they'll have a balanced budget by the end of the year, whereas there are two other funds that we're looking at and asking that, as, we present them in a yellow, with a yellow button or a yellow signal, that there are areas that we're going to monitor. If there were areas that we were asking you to take action upon, or we were making recommendations for actions, we would note those in red so that we knew that we had to take immediate action and make changes. The two areas that we are looking at closely, one is the water utility. The water utility rainfall was high in the second quarter, which mean that, meant that water sales were less than what they predicted when they prepared their budget. For all we know, that could change in the next six months, but it does bear watching over the next quarters to see what revenues are coming in to balance that budget for expenditures. The water is very aware of that. We'll put management controls in place and, and, and monitor that as we progress. The other area is the general fund. The general fund, the good news is that the revenues and expenditures are less than budget, and so we are, we know that's a precious area where we're addressing public safety, public infrastructure, parks and recreation, our human services. So, so we are below budget from a revenue and expenditure standpoint. However, when we look at revenues, they're very soft. There's about a six-tenths of a percent difference in what we estimated the revenues would be, and so we want to be cautious as we go through this next three months in, in what our, what our awareness of what our spending is. We'll continue to monitor revenues. Should they turn around, we'll, we'll look at specifically parking revenues. We're going to look at communication services tax, and then make a decision at that point on, with the departments, on how we, how we address that going forward. These, you know, the quarterly updates, as I mentioned, provide a guidepost for, for moving forward. It also provides us an opportunity to take advantage of, of meeting frequently and making changes to the budget. We are making three recommended changes to the budget. One in solid waste. We want to recognize a contract for recycling. You know, the community, the community is committed to recycling. Markets that are outside of our control have changed. We don't want to change our habits, and we want to recognize the impact that recycling has on clean air, clean water, or cleanliness of our community, and continue that, that recycling activity. And so we're making a recommendation on amending a contract to share in the cost of, of those recyclables. We're also taking this opportunity to make two amendments to the electric utility projects. One is for an accounts receivable project. They've been asked to move some transmission lines out by the airport. That's in, in, working with FDOT to do it at the same time, so it's a cost reimbursement. So we're asking to increase that project by $1 million to reflect that, that incoming revenue when we, when we get reimbursed from FDOT. The last opportunity is as we do maintenance, we, we take note of what other, what other improvements need to be made to the, to the turbines. So the Hopkins turbine was under regular maintenance, and they identified an issue that while they were making those changes to the turbine to make improvements, made recommendations to, to also address those others. And so we're asking to increase the project for the Hopkins and the Purdum master projects, which gives us the funding so that we can do that regular maintenance by $2 million. That would come from their undesignated reserve, excuse me, not reserves, but replacement improvement fund, and they have the capacity to, to bring those funds into the project. So we'll be asking you to vote on those three amendments. We'll bring an update in the third quarter. We'll continue to update you on performance with the various funds, continue communication with the funds. One aspect where we worked very hard also and want to bring to your attention is the proposed budget that we just developed also updates the, some business cost comparisons. It's the benchmarks that we use from a residential and commercial and small business perspective to understand what our impact on those, on those families and on those businesses are. As you all know, the municipal cost comparison showed us at the lowest of, among the other 11 comparables, where we, where we identify what our, what our, what our property taxes are, what our utility costs are, what our fire services fees are, and so very competitive from a residential perspective. We've taken the additional step to look at some small businesses to see how they compare from a perspective of a barber shop, a local coffee shop, a local consulting firm. We've looked at the square footage and found the equivalent businesses in those, in these other locations, made those comparisons, and feel like we're very competitive. In one case, the barber shop has the third-lowest cost of the 12 cities. The coffee shop is fourth-lowest cost of the 12 cities, and the local consulting firm with 25 employees is the second-lowest total cost of the 12. The differences lie in some of the stormwater fees, depending upon the amount of, of impact that they have locally, then their stormwater fees may, may account for the differences in, in how we compare ourselves to, to the other communities. So measuring ourselves is very important, making sure that the status of the current budget is very important, and that leads us then into where we are going for fiscal year 20. The key assumptions that we have talked about as we've progressed, this is our fourth opportunity, has been mentioned, to talk about the budget. We've been pretty consistent in what we have identified, incorporated any new recommendations that you've made. You know, that includes no increase in property tax rate. Will remain at 4.1 mills. We'll have the opportunity to vote on that in June and/or July so that we meet an August 4 deadline for the property appraiser. The general fund deficiencies reserve is maintained at two months of what the general fund budget is. We'll, we'll meet that target. And then, and then operating costs are being held at 2019 levels as we go into 2020. We do have a different assumption for the utilities. We do recognize a consumer price index increase for their operating costs and have assumed that in, in their performance. The CHS.
Robert, let me, let me, let me stop you real quick.
Sure.
Here's what I'd like to do, because this is a new commission, brand-new, and the budget's the most important thing we'll do. Let's go back to the fiscal year 19 second quarter.
Okay.
See if we have any questions or discussions on that. We'll go ahead and deal with the formal motion on the second quarter, and then let's launch back into fiscal year 20 so that we got a separation between the two, and we'll walk through what we got coming up. Sound good?
Absolutely.
So Commissioners, are there any questions on the fiscal year 19 second quarter update? Which, by the way, I certainly do appreciate the quarterly updates. I think it helps us quite a bit to understand where we are and where we're going and how we're doing, especially as a new commission. It's, it's very helpful. Thank you. Are there any questions, Commissioners, or Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, on the second quarter? Dr. Bryant?
Yes. On the general fund, you stated that it was six-tenths of 1% I think lagging behind budget. Is the budget being compared to our current revenue or projected year, end-of-year revenue?
Great question, Commissioner. The six-tenths of a percent that I mentioned is compared to what we estimate revenue to be at the end of the year. We are below budget in both cases, in the revenue and expenditures, and we're making a comparison of actuals to year-end.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question. Any other questions or comments? So what I'd like to do, Commissioners, if you feel appropriate, let's entertain a motion to accept the report for the fiscal year 19 second quarter update, and then we'll begin a new discussion on the proposed fiscal year 20 budget.
How do you want to handle the staff recommendations?
Yeah, the staff recommendations, absolutely. It'd be, so if you look in our agenda item, the recommended action, option number one would be to accept the fiscal year 2019 second quarter budget update in the, in the budget amendments as they were mentioned.
So that would be included in?
That would be included. Yes, sir. Good question.
I would move staff's recommendation.
Okay. The Mayor Pro Tem has properly moved staff's recommendation for the fiscal year 19 second quarter budget update. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, it's probably seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. So Robert, sorry for interrupting you. So I tell you what, why don't we go ahead and start over with the fiscal year 20 discussion?
Absolutely. Thank you. If I can get going in the right direction on my, my PowerPoint slide. So the fiscal year 20 operating budget assumptions, and thank you for that clarification. One of the primary assumptions that we're making when we speak of the general fund is that there will be no increases in property taxes. We recognize that there are save our homes protections for our residential homeowners, that property taxes, when they, when there is additional value from, from improvements in the community, that that should go towards growth, and so we want to maintain our mileage at 4.1. And so, we want to maintain our millage at 4.1 mils. Use any additional revenue from that for that growth and any efficiencies that are affecting this and priorities that we have across the government. Mentioned the general fund deficiencies reserve. Our target is to remain at two months of operating expenditures. That's in policy, identified as a longstanding best practice among governments. And, and we are working towards that, that deficiencies reserve. We've asked the departments that their operating costs be held in the general fund at 2019 levels. That is a unique approach. There are times where we will automatically increase those operating costs by, by CPI and we do that in the utilities. What we recognize in the general fund is, is revenues are tight. We are asking for efficiencies. As an example, in our office, we no longer print the volume of budget books that we used to print. So, we've cut, curtailed our, our, our paper stock. We're now talking about sharing copiers. A lot of us use electronic devices, so that's changing the, the environment. So, we're asking that as we go forward with the general fund, that they identify those cost savings and, and then repurpose those towards the priorities that you have. We recognize that the, the human service partnership is important. We've entered into the second year of a two-year agreement in funding that at the same level, $1.9 million. There's an additional $200,000 that comes from CDBG and from the Change for Change program that will also be included. And that will be used to, to maintain those contracts that we have with the CHSP awardees. There are, the increases to salaring wages will be consistent with fiscal year 19. We also have collective bargaining agreements in place. And essentially, we're, we're talking about a 3% cost of living increase for employees. We have a minimum in place for employees that, that are on the lower end of our salary spectrum. And then, we've, we've also committed to the $12 per hour. In the fiscal year 20 budget, we also want to talk about an additional step for the $12 per hour. As you all know, a solid waste rate study is underway. Part of that rate study is to recognize the change in the recycling markets. The revenue that used to offset some of our collection costs isn't there. We want to continue to recycle and so, we, we made an amendment to that contract. The larger portion of, of what we're considering is how do we address our agreement with Leon County and with waste management for hauling and disposal of, of our waste that's taken to Jackson County. They found that that's the most efficient, cost-effective manner to, to haul and dispose of our waste. And we need to see what impacts that has on our rate study. We'll also update our municipal cost comparison and our business cost comparison to see where that puts us within our respective other government agents, entities across the state of Florida. We feel there, there's room there for not impacting our customers to a great extent. And then, lastly, we've talked about parks and recreation programs. When we, it's been a few years since we've looked at fees. We went to the advisory board and spoke to them about the, the circumstances by policy. We do have direction to change fees over time. Their recommendation was to leave youth, recreation and sports without any change, no increase in, in what, what they pay for those youth sports and recreation. But that there would be a 5% increase for adult programs and a 10% increase for, for facilities, rental of facilities and use of our, our parks. And we're looking at that having about a $77,000 impact on the, on the general fund revenue.
You missed the sidewalk.
Question.
You are so right.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I was just pointing out that he missed the sidewalk one, but we see it.
That, that was our April update was our commitment to add 10 additional sidewalks on a five-year cycle in the capital budget. And we, we're working for, towards that commitment right now. So, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, that was one of my questions, because you had skipped over that when I was interested in knowing.
Commissioners, I, I believe they're already busy working on them. I think that was the reason why. They're, they're already at it.
All right. Robert, the deficiencies fund, I thought at one point we, that the deficiencies fund was fully funded.
It, it is, it was fully funded. We, we use the deficiencies fund as a means to address storms on a short-term basis. And so, we're in the process of verifying what our, what our fund balance is for the deficiencies fund. We believe that when we reconcile Hermine, Irma, and more, more recently, Michael, that we'll be much closer to, to fully funded. But to say that, that the process that we go through is a quarterly process to update the deficiencies fund reserves, we're, we're looking at maybe doing that on a monthly basis. But it's a, it's an amount that changes day by day. And so, a point in time will suggest that we've got a percent difference here or there. And so, but we're confident that when we.
So, you'll let us know when, when we get to that point, what we need to do to, again, fully fund that deficiency?
Yes.
Because I think that's very important, especially given, you know, what we've had to do with the hurricane damages and that's where the money has come from to cover that.
Yes.
That we make sure that those funds are, are always there. Yeah, it was the sidewalks and I think that was it.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that.
Question?
Yes. Dr. Bryant?
On the increase to salaries and wages, to be consistent with fiscal year 19 budget, was that agreed upon, I guess, in this last budget cycle for a two-year cycle? What, what does it mean to be consistent with? Is it going to be the same thing or was it already agreed upon?
There wasn't a formal agreement and you would give us that direction, but that's our commitment as we work through the budget is to, to meet that standard.
So, that, that's the standard for this upcoming?
Yes.
Okay. And collective bargaining, are we at the cusp of starting over with that process? Didn't it go over several years?
I believe that the negotiations start in the coming January.
Okay.
So, we cover several years.
Mr. Mayor?
I might add a comment. Oh, no, go ahead. Commissioner Richardson mentioned the deficiencies fund and the importance of keeping that at policy level. I just wanted to mention that to your point of, of a new commission, that's a, historically, that's a fund that, you know, we call it deficiencies fund, but it's really the reserve for our general fund where our most sensitive revenues and expenses come into play, where you are often looking to do additional things and also maintain service levels. So, we have over 10 or 15 years as a, as a city that I think done a really good job restoring that. We had a period of time through an economic downturn, great recession, whatever term you choose. We spent those funds down and the commission made a commitment to restore that. And for me, and I think anyone who's talking to the public, being able to do that provides validity to what that's there for. You have it there, you have reserves in case you need them. If it's always exactly at policy level, it's really almost a meaningless thing, but we were able to use it to meet needs for a period of time. But then, Commissioner Richardson and others, Commissioner Musking at the time, I think, made a motion to put extra one-time monies to restore that fund. So, we had gone down to probably, I'm looking at Raul and Robert, maybe $5 million or something to a low level. And then, over years, restored that to a $20 million level. So, we've consistently managed that. And so, to the point of hurricanes, you need that there to do things, even if you're going to get reimbursed and you know you're going to get them, that, that fund is where you have some flexibility to handle difficult times. And then, it's important when you have good times to make sure that you maintain it. I just wanted to give that historical perspective, that we have used it, but we want to be sure it's there now so that we have it if we need it.
And Mr. Treasurer Clerk, doesn't that also impact our bond rating to have that reserve fund fully funded?
That's, that's very significant for us in terms of a bond rating and looking, and the investor community looking at how we manage our finances. There are a couple of things. One, it says we have prudent policies. Two, it says we have an elected body that adheres to our policies. So, there are two things. One, do you manage it well and do you have policies and procedures in place and are staff doing what they're supposed to? And then, two, do you have an elected body that backs it up? There may be places that have policies, but if the elected officials don't hold staff's feet to the fire or show discipline themselves, then, then, then you have a conflict there for the, for the public who really is looking at you from a different. So, that, again, that process we went through was very beneficial. We were able to maintain our bond ratings through a, through a downturn that a lot of people faced and then, and able to restore it so that adds credibility to in the long run.
Thank you.
So, our reserve fund should represent, you know, about 17% of the operating. And I learned that about 25 years ago when I interned at the city for this incredible gentleman, Mr. Lavin, who was my direct supervisor at the time, teaching me about the budgeting process and it still holds true today. So, I, I like our target of, as you say, Mr. Pro Tem, bringing, bringing it back to full funding level. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I just wanted to be clear back to Commissioner Bryant's question about increases to salaries. As I recall, in our last review of the budget, we agreed to this assumption that we would, the fiscal year 19 was a 3% increase to salaries and we agreed to hold it at that level. So, I want it to be clear that we're talking about 3%.
Correct.
Here. Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Good point of clarification.
Yeah, thank you for that. Great questions and thank you, Jim, for that addition. From a perspective of those bullets, I, we wanted to take those and operationalize those into a preliminary budget pro forma, which we've presented on this slide. It's a comparison of fiscal year 19 budget to the fiscal year 20 budget. On the left side, lettered A through G are our general fund revenues. Lettered H through P are various categories of our operating expenses for the general fund. Most note and most importance is that we're looking at a preliminary pro forma for the general fund of $158.8 million with a fiscal year 20 budget estimate of $160.5 million. That's about a 1.1% change from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. The, the various revenues that make up our general fund are what direct us towards balancing a budget. Block, I've mentioned the local property tax of 4.1 mils as letter A listed as the ad valorem. And I'll apologize early, a lot of these titles are from state chart of accounts and, and so, they're not always illustrative of, of what's actually represented in those funds. And so, I'll, I'll do my best to describe those. Our taxes and franchise fees are our local electric, water, sewer, gas fees that, that the state collects and remits to us. And then, it also includes our communication service tax. Our Florida half-cent sales tax and our state revenue sharing are, are also areas where, where the state remits funding to us. And, and in June, they'll, I'm sorry, in July 1st, they'll provide a final estimate based on what process they went through in the legislature with the, with the, with the committees that establish what their estimates are. And we'll update those numbers. We've also identified the recreation fee as a subcomponent of, of our, our other revenues. Those other revenues in, in the line that's lettered F include our parking lots, our garage, our garages. Includes an agreement with the Animal Services Center where, where we receive revenue from Leon County for a shared service and, and various other smaller revenue items such as our parks and recreation fees. We also then reflect our contribution from the utilities. And that is our, our profit essentially from, from owning our own municipal utilities, one of the benefits of, of having those and strengths of having those utilities. So, our total revenue, as I mentioned, 158.8 million that we budgeted in, in fiscal year 19 and 160 million. You'll note that we are showing an increase in ad valorem based on what current estimates we have from the property appraiser. We'll update that in June 1st when they provide a, an updated estimate. And then, you'll notice that in our other revenues, we've reflected some changes. We do expect some revenues to go down. The economy that we, that we see, the, the current process of what we see in revenues warrants us to, to reduce those revenues. And, and we've reflected that in this preliminary, preliminary pro forma. Expenditures.
So, Robert, before we get into the expenditures, just to recap, even though we're maintaining and have already agreed to maintain the millage rate at 4.1, we are still generating $2.6 million more than last year because of an increase in property value, per se. Our reven, our other revenues are, I think, down pretty significantly, which we should have conversations about parking fees. And I guess these other fees weren't appropriate, that's the major gap. But overall, the total change in our general revenue fund budget is 1.1% over last year. Even though the cost of construction material always goes up, cost of providing services goes up, the only true delta from last year to this year is 1.1%.
Yes. That's where we are today. Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I would add to that, despite what you will read, this is not a tax increase. We, we have, for the past several years, maintained our millage rate at 4.1. Now, what they do across the street and how they define it is one thing, but this is not a tax increase on the property owners in the city of Tallahassee.
Sure. Commissioner Matlow?
On the other revenues, is, is the change a decline in expected usage or do we just not hit the projection from 2019?
That's a good question.
Yeah, great question. It's, some of it is not, we didn't hit the projection from our 2019 estimates. And we, we have had a change in, in process internally where we're doing more maintenance work. And so, we do, when we're doing construction within the, on behalf of the general fund, we do recoup overhead and capitalize those wages so that we reflect the true cost of any construction that we do. Since we're doing more maintenance, that, those, those dollars that flow through the general fund aren't there any longer. And it aren't appropriate to reflect as revenues in the general fund.
Good question. Dr. Bryant?
Yes. On the recreation fees, which is the area that we are projecting an increase by 5 and 10%, does the research reflect that we are going to still be competitive with regards to the rates that we're charging as compared to other communities?
Yeah. In, in our conversations with Parks and Recreation and with the advisory board, we are still very, very, we're not an expensive choice. And that's, that's by design. We, we want to be, you know, fill a gap within the community for children, for adults so that they continue to, to involve themselves in sports and recreation. And so, this doesn't put us outside the realm of, of what's being charged in the private sector. Doesn't put us as close to them or, or near them as, as we could be, but, but it's still a viable option. And we can bring back some examples of, of those, what those rates are.
Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Have you finished?
You made a comment as compared to the private sector. I'm, I'm more interested in as compared to other cities of our size.
Yeah, we would, I, I think we would have to look to, I, I think that was considered and Ashley may be the appropriate person to answer that.
Robert, let me, let me just chime in. I think it would be good for Ashley to come speak to that. I think this is a good question. Ashley Edwards is our Parks and Recreation Director and she does, she and her staff do a fantastic job. The commission, commission years ago has adopted a policy to, to attempt to recover the cost of the services. But even within that, you know, Ashley and her team work on a pretty meager budget, to be honest with you. And that, and I only say this in front of you, I don't share this with Ashley, because we, we say, go do more and you get less budget. But they do a great job. And as you know, we've got about 3,500 acres of parkland, soon to be 89 active parks in our inventory. We've got the best parks in the nation. That's according to me. You can attribute that to me. And they do a great job and we always have to find a way to do more with less. And so, the fees do reflect that very constrained budget. How we compare to others, I know Ashley is the expert on that, but I, but I'm very confident that we fare favorably. Ashley?
City manager is absolutely correct. Our, our fees are, I would say, well within a range that you would find common to municipalities of our size and similar programs. Parks and Recreation fees are often like comparing apples and oranges many times because of the, the variety that's involved with the program offerings. But when we do look at comparable and similar programs in cities, we feel like we're in that range that, that we are acceptable.
Good point. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I was just going to add, you know, Ashley and I go way back. I was just gonna add, you know, Ashley and I go way back. I have experience with parks and reg, having managed a baseball park for a number of years, and for, I'm real comfortable with what we're recommending, to keep the youth sports at a minimum, because we want our children to be involved, and sometimes financing is a barrier. But the last time I did baseball registration, for the thirteen, fourteen year, it was only fifty-five dollars. And for that, we provided them with a shirt, a hat, and we bought baseballs, and we paid for insurance. So these are the kinds of things that we were able to do at the park, and for the younger kids, it's even less than that. And I also know that when you go to rent meeting space, the meeting space right now, I think it's like thirty-two dollars per hour or something like that, very comfortable compared to other places if you go and try to rent. So I want to just pile on and say that I think our parks and regs are the best in the country, and we have the best staff in the world, who make sure that our kids get what they need, and Ashley and I have been on speed dial for years, so they are very responsive. So I think we're getting more than our money's worth.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mark. All right, Robert, expenditures.
Thank you for those comments. Expenditures, I think we talked about personnel costs. This is reflective of the public safety, public infrastructure, Parks and Recreation, staff, and the three percent raise that we're, living wage that we're talking about also. Operating expenses maintained at prior levels. Our utilities in, letter K, our utilities and internal service fund costs reflect changes that we've made in technology, improvements that we've made in the technology, and then it also reflects their salaries and wages going up a bit also. We've broken out CHSP, COCA, and outside agencies to reflect those amounts that are paid out of the general fund, the one point nine million dollars, the one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for COCA, and then our one million and seventeen thousand dollars for our outside agency funding. As we move down the list of expenditures to balance the fund against revenues, we will also look at transfers. Transfers is primarily made up of debt and rent expense. Any debt service that we have, any debt service payments that we have for the 2014 bond issuance, and most recently, a 2018 bond issuance, and then rent we pay on behalf of any facilities where we occupy a space that we, that's more efficient to rent. We make a concerted effort to ensure that we're repairing and maintaining our roads and sidewalks. That's our transfer to our capital fund. It's essentially a cash payment from the general fund to recognize that upkeep that's required, and the effort that we've gone through in the last three years to increase that repair and maintenance. Lastly, our contributions, again, it's, you know, a neutral item, as it's described there, but it's essentially a pass-through for our CRAs. The money comes into the city, we pass it on to the CRAs. It also reflects our transfer to transit, and then also our payment to the Consolidated Dispatch Agency. So that makes up the one hundred and sixty point five million dollars in expenditures.
Any questions regarding the expenditures before we move on? Dr. Bryant?
On K, tell me again, what is ISF?
Yes, Internal Service Fund. Our Technology and Infrastructure Department, our Human Resources, our Accounting Systems, they are all, they're all support costs to the various funds. We allocate them based on representative measure to charge the various funds for those services, and this represents the general fund portion of that.
So when you said it included salaries?
Yes, it includes the salaries of the staff in Technology and Innovation, or Human Resources, or our Accounting Department, or Customer Services.
So that's not a part of H?
I'm sorry?
It's not a part of the personnel in H?
The personnel that's reflected in H does not include those internal service funds, exactly, yes.
All right, moving on.
We'll say that this is preliminary. I've mentioned June and July as being key dates where we'll get updated information, but we did want to operationalize what the pro forma would look like with our key assumptions. Some recent events and recent updates we wanted to speak to, that we're evaluating as we develop the budget, these are not necessarily reflected in the pro forma that we just spoke to, but will soon be when we come back in June. You know, the Tempo Program just reached a milestone of five hundred participants, and it's done a fantastic job. We've been very fortunate to receive an appropriation from the legislature to fund caseworkers and some administrative staff, along with the Department of Juvenile Justice grant. It's our effort in fiscal year twenty that we'll use that money to then find either a recurring appropriation and/or recurring funding for the Tempo Program. One aspect that's very important to Tempo is also a facility, a hard space, and we're working to identify the cost expenditure for that in the capital program. The idea would be that would be synchronized with maybe our super stop effort, is one idea that's come to mind. So the Tempo Program, I'm showing a chart of what additional budget items we're considering for fiscal year twenty. In the case of the Tempo Program, we're showing the estimated revenue from the appropriation, as well as the grant from DJJ, and then the estimated expense that we expect to implement in fiscal year twenty. So there's a balance of zero dollars there. We are also working on a plan to transition the Riley House. We, there's been a discussion between Parks and Recreation and the foundation at the Riley House about how to transition that program, to make sure that it becomes, continues as the legacy that it is. We currently fund in two means, by outside agency funding. We provide forty-nine thousand dollars to the Riley House for their operations, and we are also working through some details on supporting tours at Smoky Hollow with some Parks and Recreation resources. We put those sixty, that sixty-five thousand dollars towards that transitional plan. We are estimating that it would need about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a full-time manager or director, and also a part-time and/or full-time support staff behind that director, and that's the estimate of the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And, Robert, would that also include maintenance and upkeep of the facility? Because that's a pretty old building, and I'm sure it requires lots of maintenance and upkeep.
Yes, that's all part of the understanding of what it would mean to transition the program and maintain it.
Commissioner, if I could add to that, I think the concept would also include retaining the foundation, fundraising arm of that, so it would provide some charitable giving opportunity to help in all those endeavors.
Great.
That was going to be my question.
Glad to hear that, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We are working towards a, as item number three on this list of additional items, we're working towards a parking enforcement change. Typically, parking is a handheld meter reader and a ticket, and we're realizing that as we enter the twentieth century, that parking has changed. It really requires a twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five day a year operation. There's marketing to make folks aware of an app that we've introduced, and then also on the backend to answer questions as there's experiences with our parking meters. So we're proposing to transition four FTEs into utility customer services to support that effort. One other area that you asked us to look at was whether or not we could extend the twelve dollars an hour to additional staff. We looked at the thirteen hundred part-time employees that we have, found that quite the majority of them are seasonal employees, truly summer work, either students or personnel with second jobs. There are other individuals who work on an ask-call basis or not on a full-time basis, but we were able to identify twenty-six individuals who do work full-time, who do have an assignment that goes throughout the year, and we are making the recommendation that they be moved to that twelve dollars an hour. The, what we would have to do is identify about a forty-five thousand dollar additional expense in the budget.
Go ahead, Robert.
Sure, thank you. In partnership with Leon County, they've asked us to share in the cost of replacing a fifty-year-old helicopter. That, there is been a great benefit to our police department, and so we've identified that as an area to explore and identify how to fit that into the budget. And then we've been long talking about a comp plan, a land use study, and that would happen in fiscal year twenty. And so that's the one hundred and seventy-five thousand and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're identifying a source of funding for that. We've mentioned the expansion of our, of the work in our growth management department, and that as we experienced what that workload would be, we would come back with recommendations on additional staff. We've got an opportunity to add a staff member and then use their revenues to offset the cost of that staff member, and so that's item number seven that we're asking to consider.
Commissioner Williams-Cox?
So is that position in effort to speed up the permitting process?
Yes, ma'am.
That's good news. We need to say that so folks will know that's what we're trying to do.
Wayne, is that a technical position, or is that more like an ombudsman position? Or have we determined that yet?
It's a highly skilled administrative-level position that would crisis control. We have issues all the time. We need someone to make those decisions on the fly.
You have crisis in growth management during the?
Every single hour of the day, there's a crisis. But it would certainly add to the benefit of getting these permits out a lot quicker and addressing the issues that we consistently have, dealing with community issues that are raised as we're permitting these projects.
Excellent. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Protimov.
I wanted to go back to the helicopter, and I certainly support that, I think it's excellent. But what I asked the city manager, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, if he would see if the sheriff would be amenable to the helicopter that they're taking offline, to maybe consider donating that to the lively aviation program. They are in desperate need of updated equipment for instructional purposes.
Thirty years old?
Fifty.
It's thirty years old.
I know, but we've got stuff out there that was from the Vietnam War.
Oh, from the World War II?
That would be, it would be an upgrade, let me tell you. Yes, it would.
Wow. It's a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The manager said he would broach that subject with the sheriff and see if he would be amenable to it.
Great. Robert?
Item number eight represents a pilot program that our code enforcement staff has identified. They'd like to work with the community to identify and garner support for graffiti abatement, establishing murals in places where there's frequent graffiti, and then also working with partners for maintaining spaces to remove graffiti. That pilot program is proposed at ten thousand dollars, and much of the cost for that would come out of the code enforcement revenues that we realize in the general fund, and so we see a one-for-one trade there. We'd bring, we'd bring back the status of the program to let you know what the community reaction was and whether to, the success of it for expansion. The last item that we have talked about over time has been the Carney Center and its funding of a hundred thousand dollars. We've identified the answers to the questions that you had about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, about the appropriateness of debt service, and are recommending using the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for that hundred thousand dollars.
Excellent. Any questions?
Well, I do have one.
Sure, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Item number four, the twelve dollars per hour for select OPS, and I'm in agreement with what you're, what you recommended. I just want to see if possibly in future budgets, we could probably look at bringing those others online as funding is available to do that. As I understand, there was quite a few, the seasonal, non-recurring positions, that we could look at perhaps in the future, being able to bring them along with some increase in future budgets, not this one, but in future budgets.
The twelve dollars an hour becomes somewhat problematic in that it puts upward pressure within the department for those who are already working there on a full-time basis. But there, yes, we can explore whether there's room between what they're currently making and that twelve dollars an hour.
And I'm not even saying twelve dollars, because we're saying seasonal. So, you know, if it's holiday time that these folks are, if there's a way to give them some type of increase, again, not in the 2020, but in future budgets, looking at ways to kind of try to close the gap.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Commissioner Mattel, sorry.
Yeah, on that same question, I'd like to see if we could, just the data on what those thirteen hundred positions are, how much they're getting paid, how many hours they're working, what positions they're working. It was also mentioned, some of the OPS people floated and did different jobs, just really the nuts and bolts of, you know, what these people are doing and what they're being paid, so we could really make that decision. But, yeah, I'm in agreeance to move ahead with this year, but just being able to do a deeper dive into there would be good.
You know what, I agree with my colleagues. I was talking to Reese, you know, my boys are playing, eight-to-ten-year-old kid pitch baseball. You get those umpires are getting hit every night by my daily boys that are pitching. They deserve twelve dollars an hour. But I would imagine that a lot of them are seasonal referees, umpires, summer camps. And I'd be interested in seeing the numbers as well, absolutely, yeah. That'd be good. Pastor Sims.
Go ahead, Robert.
So in, between now and June fifth, we'll work towards closing the gap on this five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars. The options that we have are new revenue that we identify, that we're able to identify based on updated estimates. Keep your fingers crossed. We also are asking and working with the departments on finding ways to be more efficient and to cut expenditures. Our other option would be to make consideration of what we're transferring for repair and maintenance. That seems to be the only other way to not impact our Parks and Recreation, our public infrastructure, our police department, but we'll work on those details between now and June fifth and bring back a balanced budget.
Excellent.
There are other gaps that we, where we receive new requests, and I wanted to take the opportunity to talk about outside agency funding. The budget that reflects a one million and seventeen thousand dollar amount is consistent with fiscal year nineteen. You know, the Community Human Service Partnership is a competitive process that, where there's a known means to apply, to be compared against other human service agencies, and then an award to be made. There are certain agencies that either are not eligible for a CHSP, don't choose not to apply. Some receive CHSP but have additional needs beyond the CHSP process, and/or support or supplant some of the work that we do in the city. This, what we've talked about over the last year is that the best way to support these human service efforts is to identify for what purpose they're for. If they are for reducing public crime, then what we want to do is move those amounts into the, into the public safety budget, closest to those, the department that can manage and ensure good outcomes, maintain accountability, and then make decisions on recommendations on what funding should be for the future. We've identified about six or seven different entities, Bathory Ready-for-Work, the Carney Center Security, Civil Citation Scholarship, about three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars that we would move into the police department budget and work with them on managing that within their budget. We've identified other areas that are supportive of our Parks and Recreation Neighborhood Affairs Department, St. Francis Wildlife, the Community Neighborhood Renaissance, the Florida Disabled Outdoors Association, and Community Gardens. In many cases, there's direct interaction between Parks and Recreation and those entities as it is, and so moving that funding into Parks and Recreation would bring that closer to working together. We have other efforts where we're supporting consolidated efforts. We work with Leon County on the Tallahassee Trust for Historic Preservation, and both fund that on an equal basis. We also fund the Downtown Improvement Authority, Downtown Marketplace, for fifteen thousand dollars. We have some other, over time, identi- We have, we have some other, over time, identified other outside agencies that have made requests, and we've accepted those requests. Honor Flight, the Children Home Society Partnership School at Sable Palm, Hope Community, Low Income, the Low Income Pool, it's the Trauma Center funding, the Oasis Center for Women and Girls, a direction that we've given them to support our, our goals as a city, United Partners for Human Services, Village Square, and Whole Child Leon. This list represents the $1,017,000 that I mentioned. There have been additional requests. St. Francis has asked for an additional $3,950. The Juvenile Assessment Center has asked for an increase of $29,800. And then we also have recent requests, an increase from the Dream Center for $35,000, another request from Aspire, and then we heard from our audience today, some, some other requests for, for funding.
Commissioner Bryant, did you have, you got my attention first.
Okay.
Will you just go straight down the line?
Well, question was just answered on the $35,000. Are, is this a recommendation, or is this something that is just up for consideration? What, what is the process for, let's say, on the presentation by Reverend Mandrell? How does that get to become a part of the recommendation? As I, I see that we have actually listed two things that I'm assuming is a recommended additional request that shows up on the sheet. And those that you didn't have before today, I understand you couldn't have it on here, but how do we, what is the process for that type consideration?
Our cap, our Human Service Partnership is the optimal means for consideration of human service requests. And so it's a two-year process, an award process. The next opportunity to apply for that CHSP process would be January of 2020. And so that's where we would direct most requests to human service agencies. If others are brought to our attention and you want to consider them, then, then that would, that would, that would come from your recommendation.
I'm just follow-up on that. So those that are already a part of it, like the increase of the $35,000, does that have to go back through the original process? And is that the process, the JAC followed, or any of the other ones?
No, we've maintained, we've maintained a budget amount of $1,017,000. Last year, when we went through this process, additional requests were brought back and considered by the, by the commission at that time. What we're recommending for this year is to maintain that $1,017,000, and so we would not show an increase in the budget for, for the, for the, for the new requests that have come through, but instead ask them to apply through the CHSP process.
Robert, I want to have the city manager jump in real quick.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, Commissioner, if I could add to that, really, that's a big part of our check-in at this point. I think Robert's indicated that we've got an overall budget amount. These amounts that you see are not written in stone. These are either historically funded activities or organizations, or ones that we've been given direction to fund. We clearly have requests beyond that that are written here. If, at the conclusion of today's conversation, the commission expressed a desire to increase the funding for the Dream Center, for example, in our proposed budget, we would go back and take all of that information into account and possibly recommend different amounts. There may be some reduced funding or eliminated funding. That's not written in stone. That would be subject to another conversation that you would have at your June workshop. But we take all of the feedback as we're, this time of the year, we're getting the request for either funding, original funding or additional funding, those kind of things. So this is the appropriate time to talk about that, and then we'll take all that direction and do our best to give you a proposed budget.
And let's back up and start, since four of us are brand-new at the city and the budget process. What is the process for an outside agency to request funding, and what information do they have to provide? I'm assuming that they provide a budget, overall the organization, proof of insurance, legitimate 501(c)(3), goals on how they'll measure success so that we can appropriately know that the taxpayer dollars is being spent wisely. What, what is the process for, because I tell you, we get calls all the time, and I send them straight over to Raul and say, "We've got to go through the process to get to where we are." So just remind us where we are with that.
The CHSP process does represent that formal process that would identify what the application criteria is, what measurables they're looking for, what outcomes they're looking for. There's a committee that works towards evaluating those to identify level of funding respective of, and relative of, of all the agencies that have applied. Our outside agency, our outside agency process is somewhat different. We do receive requests by mail, by email, by phone call, sometimes by word of mouth, and then we'll, we'll ask for backup documentation of what their goals are, what their purpose is, what their expected outcomes and measurables are. But there isn't a absolute formal process, application process for that outside agency funding.
Mr. Mayor? Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Bryant, will you finish with the, okay, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. And I know that this is how things have been done, but because we are new, we don't know any better than to ask these questions and to see why it's done this way and if we can do it a different way. Because I'll just share with you that I am more interested in putting funding with the boots on the ground so that we can, because if it doesn't get monitored, it's not being measured, it may not be getting done. Are we getting reports back from folks who we give money to that what they're doing with it and if they're moving the needle? We're trying to move the city forward, and we need to be working with people who are out there on the street level doing that. Not convening meetings and serving food, but actually out there trying to make a difference. And I, I would like to know if these agencies that we're giving money to are doing this. I'll start with the human services. Now, they have a separate process, and I'm not sure what the process is other than what you just described to me. But I got to believe that somewhere along the way, agencies that they're most familiar with are able to come and get funding time and time again. So new organizations may not be getting that opportunity. I'm not saying that that's true, but I'm just thinking, you know, we kind of go with what we know. And so I'm, I'm hoping that if we're going to continue funding with the human services, that they provide us with who's getting the money, what they're doing with it, what kind of reporting, so that we can determine if we want human services to continue to manage this for us, because we may want to manage it directly and put it with these other...
No, we don't want to.
Well, I'm just...
We've done it before. It doesn't work.
I'm just saying. There are organizations out there who are really making a difference with pennies. And so they need a chance at some of these, and I've heard from some who say that the process is, is an arduous process. And that may be on purpose, for whatever reason, but we've got to break this barrier and allow programs that are doing the work to be able to get some funding, a little bit of funding to help do that work. So I'd like to know more about who know that process and who's getting money through there historically, who's been getting money, so that we can see if there is, if they are really moving the needle and giving it to, to folks. But I also want to get a report of how it's being used and are we making any progress? Because if we're just throwing good money at a bad problem and nothing's changing, then the definition of insanity is you keep doing the same thing expecting different results, and we're not, I'm not for that. I want to make sure we're moving the needle. The other thing, too, is under the other, on the outside agencies, other, there are some organizations here who I don't know what they do. And I really need to know what they do in order to be able to, for instance, Whole Child Leon, I know they do a children's summit. What else do they do? What, what, what else are they doing? And that children's summit, I attended, I've attended it on occasion. I went to the one this week. It was a half-day. Great information, but in my, in the past, I've gone, and they've shown the red dots and the green dots. Okay? The green dots are up on the northeast end of town. The red dots are on the south side of town. And that's talking about children, children being ready for school and, and their aces and that kind of thing. I need to see those red dots become green dots, because if they're not, then we don't need to keep convening meetings. We need to get together and get out there and find out what's happening to make those dots turn green. So I'm just saying, just what I'm saying. We need to fund the boots on the ground, and if we decide not to do that, then we need to get some reporting, some reliability, some accountability and reliability from the people who are getting the money and what they're doing with it. Because I will tell you that I am not hearing great things about all of these organizations and all these, these issues. So I'm hoping that when we look at this, we consider that. We heard two programs today. There are millions of other programs out there, and they're really making a difference. But we've got to invite them in. I'm off my soapbox.
Any other comment? Commissioner Matlow?
To the mayor's point, you know, these don't include all the other people who reach out to us individually for funding, and there's really, to me, no rhyme and reason of how we're picking it and what metrics we're basing it on. I personally wouldn't like to continue funding outside agencies in that fashion. I think if they're eligible for CHSP or, or if we set up a process like that, that we use to vet agencies and see what they're spending the money on and what the, what the metrics are that we're getting a return from our investment, I would support something like that. But when it comes down to us just picking and choosing and, you know, our agencies having to come give a three-minute pitch at a budget workshop, it's just largely not the place to do that. It doesn't give us the chance to vet the project, see what they're doing, and see what their return to the community is. So I like to take a step back on the larger, and I know a lot of people are not going to be happy when they hear that, but to take a step back and see how we can structure this differently. If we can direct people who are eligible for the current CHSP to go that way, and if we need to set up a separate pool to cover some of the other and set up a process for people to apply for that other funding. But I don't think we should have the same people year after year outside of a process getting funding. So when new agencies want to come in and apply, they should be able to compete on a level playing field based on what they can deliver. And I don't think we're, we're at a point right now where people can do that. And then further on that, I think, as we look into those processes, we should see how we can allow new startups, new nonprofits, and then people, or agencies that are doing what we're focused on currently, if that's gun violence and youth, we can direct, you know, money in those directions. But I don't think we can continue to arbitrarily decide who gets money and who doesn't.
Commissioner Matlow, I could not agree with you more. For 12 years on the county commission, I have stated that when we get into this line-item funding, it is the most political thing we do. And there's a limited pot of money. Somebody's always a winner, somebody's always a loser, and it literally comes down to politics. I think it is a, a good direction. For instance, this other category, I would raise it up to a, just a level 400,000, put it into the CHSP process. There was a gentleman, Mr. Crowley, that testified earlier and spoke specifically about more citizen input. That is the process where you get citizens that actually go through and do evaluations and get, roll up their sleeves and really spend time with the organizations and identify specifically how they impact our community in a positive nature, and those decisions through the CHSP process are done by the citizens. I think it's, I, I am wholeheartedly in favor of moving in this direction. If this is a conversation that we want to continue through the budget process, instead of doing line-item funding, literally taking that money, even increasing it to an even 400,000 and putting it in the CHSP process where everybody has an equal opportunity to apply. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Before I agree to that process, I need to know what it is.
Sure.
I don't, I don't know what the CHSP process is, so I need to be educated on that. But we do need, we do need a process. But we don't need one that's gonna, for the small groups, the small folks, to have to go out and get a CPA to bring some performant information in order to be able to go do their job. That we don't, we don't need that level of process, because there are those who will be able to afford that, and there'll be those who are not able to afford it. And just because you're not able to afford it doesn't mean you're not effective in doing what you're doing. For instance, Reverend Mandrell just spoke to us about buying a kitchen table for somebody if they don't have one. Why would you need to go through an, an arduous process to be able to do something that simple? So I need to know the process and see if it's one that I can, I can agree to. But I do agree that there needs to be some process, other than a political process, for doling out the other, other funds.
Sure. So the, the, and if staff could provide all the historical information related to the CHSP process to everyone, that'd be great. Commissioner Williams-Cox, many, many years ago, there was a partnership created between the city, the county, and at the time, the United Way. And what happened was, is instead of picking winners and losers like this, and, you know, "We're going to add 20,000 here and take it away from this person," what we all agreed to do was the two governmental entities with the United Way would put the money into one big pool. And there would be a process with several educational workshops for any organization that wanted to apply to come through. A citizens' group, not politicians, but a citizens' group was established. And over the course of several weeks, they would go onsite. They would meet with these organizations. They would go over mission purpose. They would dig into the budgets. They would ask all the questions. And the citizens' group would determine the funding levels for the organizations instead of it being done at a workshop like this. So you had more citizen input. Now, I will admit that I've been a little frustrated recently. The United Way has pulled out of that process, so right now, our process is county funding and city funding. And we put it into this pot, and then we allow the citizens to go forward from there. And the United Way does their own process that's similar to it. So I think it's a great idea to explore, we're not going to solve this right now, I get it, but I think it's a great idea to explore of getting away from the line-item funding and going specifically to the, to the CHSP process. And I would be more than happy to entertain, entertain that conversation moving forward as well. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I was just going to say, well, before we march off down that road, we, we've had two presentations today.
Right.
That whatever we decide to do, I would like to see them either, you know, notice this, this is not a budget. These are, we're, we're collecting and gathering. Put them in there for the amount that they've asked for, and then as we go through this process, so that we don't lose it, you know, because, you know, if we don't, if we don't write it down, we could lose it. Just get it, get it in there. So whatever process we go to, these individuals, these folks who are listed here and the ones who presented today, will be a part of whatever that process is, and they won't get left behind.
Okay. The delta, as I figured, between the two proposals that came before us today is about $110,000, correct?
I think you're right.
Because we already have, you already have the Dream Center in for 15,000, so the increase, it would be 110,000, which would take this other category up to basically $500,000. Okay. I'm looking for other comments right now for discussion. I mean, again, workshop, this is how it works.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, please.
It would be very informational and informative for the new commissioners to have that. Maybe we do a workshop on the CHSP so that you can know what the history, this thing was out of control at one point, because people were having to go to the city, to the county, to the United Way, making the same pitch, and some were getting funding from both bodies, and some were getting nothing. And so the idea was to bring all of those three funding agencies together that the mayor talked about, the city, county, and United Way, and put that money into a pot, but also to, to, because we, we have to be responsible for how taxpayer money is spent.
Absolutely.
And so there has, they, there were metrics formed, there were evaluation criteria established, and like the mayor said, these, the citizen groups would go into these organizations. They make a pitch. They see what they've done, how they've done it, how effective they've been. And there are some organizations that were taken out of this, the Community Human Services Partnership funding, because they weren't meeting those metrics and showing that they were being effective in achieving the goals that, that they had set out. So, Mr. Mayor, it, it might be advisable for us to do a workshop, so everybody's brought up to speed as to how that Community Human Service Partnership came into being and what it does and how effective it's been. It got us out of this. This, this is what was being done prior to Community Human Service Partnership, and it was a mess. It was all political.
Right.
Because whoever had the most political clout, if you will, or the loudest voices, they got on this list. And that was, that was the Community Human Service Partnership. And that was, that was the Community Human Service Partnership dollars. Now, when we did Community Human Services Partnership, we still got this list. Because people would come to commissioners, "Well, you know, we need $10,000 for this and we need $100,000 for that." And because they had the voice or the political connection or the clout or whatever you want to call it, they made it onto this list. That's how this list was, was generated. And I think it was even last year or the year before, we had an extensive discussion because even this was getting out of control. We still had people trying to come around the CHSP process and get funding from the city. And like I said, that's, that's how this, this additional list came into being. So if, if we want to put this money into the Community Human Services Partnership pot, good luck. Be ready for what's gonna come. Because we saw it when we started looking at trying to reduce this monster that we had wrestled, this monster that we had created. And, and you, you're gonna get the calls and, you know, people are gonna stop you on the street, "Oh, please, don't, don't take the money from my agency. We need..." That's what you're gonna get. To say that this is the right way to do it, I'm not saying that. I'm just telling you what the history of this has been and the monster that you're gonna create, probably even after this meeting this afternoon and people get the word that, "Uh-oh, my money might be gone next year." So that's just something for us to consider as we, as we move forward. I, I don't have an idea as to how to remedy it, but I'm just telling you what has happened in the past when we've tried to do that.
I can, I can, I can make an argument that, you know, if we were moving forward with this process, a lot of these line items actually should be in the departmental budget.
Mm-hmm.
But out of 160 million projected general revenue for next fiscal year, we will spend more time on this 400,000 in the other category, right, right here. We will spend more time on this. And the other thing that we have to be prepared for is that we had two incredible presentations today, two programs for two additional funding requests. Commissioner Richardson, the mayor pro tem is absolutely correct. We have the budget workshop on June 5th. You're gonna have four dozen nonprofits going. You put them in at the last workshop, put us in.
Yep.
And so it then becomes, look, at the end of the day, there is a level to the amount of money that's available. Then it's, we're taking here to fund here, we're increasing here, we're decreasing there, and it is a nightmare. It really is. And I'm with you. I don't have all the answers. But Commissioner Matlow is on to something that I think that we should continue to talk about. The other thing that I would love to see is a matrix because of all the different governmental funding strategies out here, okay? In the current requests that are before us, who is also receiving downtown improvement authority funding for, say, their downtown festival? Who is receiving CRA funding for their programming? Who is receiving COCA funding for their program? I would love to see the mix of how much money people are receiving from other agencies as well, okay? If you are not receiving CHSP funding, which I understand is not actually a local ordinance, but it's kind of the practice, correct? You can't receive CHSP funding and be a line item in the city budget. It's not, okay? But what are your funding levels at the county? Are you receiving school board funding as well? I think that also helps paint a good picture of where organizational funding is coming from. And, you know, are we, are we going to every single available option and, and pulling funding from there? Commissioner Williams Cox.
Since you mentioned that the United Way pulled out, and originally, we had three funding sources. Now we're down to two. I think it warrants taking a look to see what that, what that impact was with the United Way coming out. Because I think you also wanted to see if they're getting funding from United Way in, in that, in that matrix. But when someone, a vital source pulls out, it's good to take a look and see what we're, what we're working with. When did, when did United Way want to pull out?
So the United Way, and correct me if I'm wrong, those of you that have been around for a while. They pulled out about two or three years ago. And quite honestly, it was a bit of a fight between the local governmental entities, with the city and county on one side and the United Way on the other side. Because we truly believe when you put public money into the process, has to be total transparency. And we were of true believers that you allow the citizens, organizations, to be able to make the final decision on the funding allocations. And the United Way wanted a little bit more control over the United Way funding pot that went in. And at a board level, wanted to have a little bit of an opportunity to maybe round some numbers here or there with final recommendations. We were not comfortable with that as governmental entities, because of the fact that it was public taxpayer dollar. And I might have this wrong, help me out with this, but there was differences on the approach on how to get to the final numbers for recommendation for funding. And so the United Way decided that it was in their best interest to, to have their own process. Since then, they have even narrowed down the scope of qualified agencies that deal specifically.
Poverty.
With poverty.
Yes.
And they are only considering funding certain organizations that deal with specific scopes of interest in the community as well. But that's, that's the background, is that they wanted to have a different process and the governmental entities, since it was taxpayer dollars, wanted a different process than what they were proposing as well.
And one more question with the CHS, CSH, what?
CHSP.
Okay. Process. Once they decide on who receives funding, that's it? It doesn't come back to us?
Correct.
That's right.
No, those recommendations do come back to the city and county commissions for final approval.
Okay, good. Because I, I didn't, I did not want to, I did not want to meet someone in the grocery store and say that I had nothing to do with whether they were selected or not.
But let's, let's make sure this point is clear, though. It comes back, but.
We don't change it.
We don't change it.
The, the commissions have historically never changed those recommendations.
Okay. Historically have not. That doesn't mean that we could not. I, I want to be clear. I just, I just want to be clear. Historically has not.
If we went in that direction, it would take.
It would blow up the process.
Then we're back to line item funding all over again.
I, I understand it.
Yeah.
You asked my question.
And it's a two-year cycle now. It used to be a year and they had to go through that once every year. And so now it's two-year funding that's committed rather than one.
Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Bryant.
Yeah, the only thing I would have kind of an objection to that is we still have a lot of outside agency fundings that are going through specific departments. And I think we have to address that without giving specific direction, because up to a certain limit, we may, we maybe need to enter a competitive bid process to even be if we're fulfilling a service such as wildlife care. You know, maybe that's something that we need to get bid out. There's one agency that's probably gonna respond to that bid and, and take it out. But where do we draw the line of if we're directing our departments to put in outside agency funding outside of what, you know, they feel and when, when would be appropriate for them to cut something out? I don't want to give the impression that we're directing departments to direct money to individual agencies. I want to leave that completely up to them to recommend who they want to fund. We talked about Will Crowley's participatory budget program, and, and that's a little different than a CHSP. This is something I think New York City does, where they convene community groups and they meet and they decide on projects and they actually put it to a vote. And it would be up to you, vote by anybody who would be a Tallahassee resident. And how you would develop that process for people to vote, you know, would be up to us. But if we're looking at the future of how we're gonna allocate money, I think, and that's something we can explore as other cities are exploring. Look, the, how much funding we would put into something like that, what other process we could set up to let the public have more participation and then take it completely off of our hands. And again, when it comes back to us. But I don't, if we don't hold the line at some point, it's gonna continue to happen. I'm willing to hold the line. I'm willing to take the phone calls. I'm willing to get stopped in the grocery stores. But I think we all have to be willing to do it. We all have to be comfortable with the process we put into place to make sure the types of agencies, the types of community good we want to do gets accomplished. So no matter what we do right now or this year, I think we need to prepare for next year and at least be very clear saying, every agency that's getting funding a letter, saying, "You're not gonna be on the list next year. We're gonna start from scratch and this is gonna be the process we're gonna start with."
Yep. Commissioner Bryant.
Oh, I've been waiting now for a while. Let me go back to other. Is this list, the list for CHSP, that went through the process that's not a process?
No.
No. The answer to that is no. So where did they, and I, I really have been trying, but my, my good friend here has been sitting up over me.
My back of my head is not working today.
So who selected these groups of people that are here right now? I'm just need education.
So some of these agencies may not have been eligible for CHSP funding. So either through commission direction or through inter-local agreements. For example, the Hope Community is something that we had an agreement when that was developed back 10, 15 years ago. So most of these were either added by the commission or they were added by agreements that we had with these agencies because they were fulfilling a purpose on behalf of the city. Or like Commissioner Richardson said, they were added at the last minute as part of budget processes.
Okay.
If I could add to that, the rule, just, just to bring clarity, the commission has authorized all of these.
Yes.
In one way or another. None of these were developed by staff or sanctioned by staff. These were all ultimately approved by the city commission.
But, and they were approved without going through a standardized process? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, the process.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's part of the problem.
Right.
In previous commissions, it's just purely political. Purely political.
We're, we're in the process right now of trying to prepare for fiscal year 20. And a lot of the things that have been suggested, I totally support, but we won't be able to do that between now and the time a budget has to be put in place. So we heard two great presentations today that I just totally supported. But I don't know anything about these other ones. Well, not all of them, but some of them. So how do we make an informed decision about the ones I heard that I'm pushing for, but these may be, some of them may be also good? So for this budget process, what shall we do in order to ensure that there is some level of integrity in this process? Meaning that people either present or we're just gonna go along with what's been done in the past? I, I just need to, to help me understand how we can move forward from where we are right now. I think the process for the future has a lot of promise to do some of the things that have been put on the table so far. But just for now, for these gentlemen who need to go back and prepare a budget, how do we leave here today from this budget workshop with direction?
Well, Dr. Bryant, I think you are absolutely correct. And one of the organizations that is listed here today did come and present, eight of them did not. And I hope that if they are watching this or listening to this, that they will contact each one of our offices and they need to come in and they need to defend their budget request and allocation to be considered. Absolutely. And yeah, this is the process that we have. This is, this is where the rubber meets the road, trying to figure out organizations and funding levels.
And some of them have. I've met with a couple of them.
Good.
Children's Home Society, I've met with them.
Good.
So if they haven't met with us as individuals, you have not met with, with them, then, then perhaps they do need to come or need to make contact.
Look, I don't know about y'all. If I had an organization that was asking for money, I'd be in each commissioner and mayor's office, sitting down, answering any and all questions that, that you might possibly have.
Uh-oh.
You know, looking for organizations. That's how the process currently is set up. Now, do I necessarily agree with that process or not? That's a conversation I'd love to have. That's the process that we currently have right now. So, Dr. Bryant, floor is still yours.
Thank you. So even if every organization attempted to schedule a meeting with every one of us today.
Right.
What direction do we provide the budget office? Do they need to wait until they all come and then do we come back together and vote? Or how does, what is the process?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I, and Commissioner, I appreciate that question because you're asking us, what are we gonna do with this, I think?
You're asking that more than we are.
That's a good question. That's a good question. I, I believe what, what we've heard, and this is, this has been the practice of the past, is I hear support from the commission to fund these outside agencies collectively at about $1,017,000. The mayor has indicated maybe a willingness to add another $11,000 for this particular category. So I'll just call that roundly $1,025,000. Now, clearly, the requests we have and the historical funding levels exceed that. So what we would, if that's the willingness, commission, what we would do is we would take that amount of money, we would evaluate these programs to the very best of our ability. We would associate those programs with departments that seem to have a correlation to the mission of the department, and we would make a recommendation. That would result in some of these probably getting less than, than possibly is on this paper, or nothing at all. Now, of course, you have another opportunity to provide this direction, but that's how we would proceed. We would make our very best recommendation within the amount of funding that we have historically applied and that you see tallied here.
Just, just for history purposes, at the last budget time last year, these, all, each of these agencies were put on notice that, because the commission at that time was concerned about the growing number of, of organizations which were outside of the standard process. And so they had staff to send letters to these organizations, letting them know that there's a possibility that the next time this comes up, you would not be funded or might be reduced funding. So they have been placed on notice.
I'd put them on double secret probation notice if, after this conversation. Comments, colleagues? Y'all wanna stay discussing outside agents funding or let Robert finish the overall presentation?
I think Robert's finished. I think Robert's enjoying this. I, I, I want to go back and say this. I'm not, I am not ignorant to the fact that some of these are listed, well, all of these have great intentions and they do great things. Who, who wants to come against the honor of life? You know, these folks have served our, our, our country. Who wants to do that? I know what the Children's Home Society, what they're doing and the, and the progress that they're making over there with Sable Palm. So much so that FSU, the new FSU clinic is over there to help them do what they need to do. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. The Hope Community, that's part of our homeless community. That's for families.
Yes.
And, you know, homelessness speaks right to our poverty. The low-income pool, trauma center, I don't know a whole lot about that, but I'm assuming that that helps people who go to the hospital, who don't have insurance or funding. And so that goes to both hospitals or how, where does that go?
That is actually a program that the trauma center uses through the state of Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, where they are required to have a local match to apply for grant funding.
Okay.
So this $50,000 leverages a couple hundred thousand dollars in additional funding for the trauma center.
Okay. So of course, we wouldn't want to do anything to harm that.
There you go.
The OAS is Center for Women and Girls, of course.
You want to harm them.
I'm pro, I'm pro girl, women and girls, so you know.
Girls rule.
The Dream Center, they, they are boots on the ground. They are making things happen. United Partners for Human Services, talk to me about that, they manage our nonprofits or something, right?
Yeah, they provide technical assistance for the nonprofits.
Technical assistance for the nonprofits.
Right, for the smaller nonprofits.
Okay.
They are the onboarding mechanism to bring them into the CHSP process, give them advice about what they do application-wise and.
How do they let organizations know that's what they do? Because if I'm asking, and I don't, you know, I was just, just saying, how do they let people know? Okay. I'm gonna put a little question mark right there. Village Square, I participated in a few Village Square events.
They've, they've helped us do community meetings, community events. They've helped out with the longest table. They've helped out with some of these specific topics that we've taken to the communities to discuss.
Okay.
So that is a contract with them to do that.
So community engagement.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I mentioned Hope Child Leon already. So, there we are. Flip a coin.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Dr. Bryant.
So, and it's really for risk. The budget cannot, are we saying that the budget has to stay where it is? Or can we add for this year and then come back after some type of analysis for future years? What is the likelihood of raising the established budget of the 389, 375 for this year?
That's a good question. Thank you, Commissioner. So I think Robert laid out the projection. So the budget has to be balanced. That's, that's the charge to the city. And as we present a proposed budget, it has to be balanced. So to the extent we increase the funding of this collective category, what would be necessary is to find offsetting savings elsewhere in the budget. That generally speaking, for fiscal year '20, is about $160 million. So it can be increased, but there'll be an offsetting decrease, an equally offsetting decrease as we prepare it. Hopefully, that answers the question.
I would suggest that if we wanted to see any additional programs funded, and again, now, consider, we're doing what we're criticizing. We're putting new programs in arbitrarily. I mean, so we're doing what got this list started in the first place. But if we're going to do that for this fiscal year, or the upcoming fiscal year, I would suggest that we allocate the $1 million and change for these organizations and let the city manager, through a process of reductions and shifts, determine how to best spend that money rather than adding from the general fund to this pot of money. That's a suggestion.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Do we anticipate having any leftovers from fiscal year '19?
No, ma'am.
It doesn't look that way.
We're going to balance the budget. Six tenths of a percent is what we need to find in the next six months. And we've obligated another $100,000 to find at year-end for purpose-built communities. So the likelihood of year-end surpluses are not...
So you say we need to find, we're going to, we've already identified the monies for purpose-built for, I know coming out of this current fiscal year?
Yes, we've committed to doing that out of this fiscal year.
Commissioner Matlow?
One, I think purpose-built should just be in the same process. I don't think we've actually confirmed moving ahead with that as a vote. I know we talked about trying to get the private sector to match it 50/50. I'm not sure they're quite there yet, so I'm not sure we're ready, or at least I'm not ready to move forward.
What was the final, remind me of the motion that passed for purpose-built?
We found $100,000 in this year's budget, and then we're supposed to come back with, our purpose will supposed to come back with a plan on how they raise private funds to match any public safety funds.
Mr. Mayor, what our preference was, was not to include it in the fiscal year '20 budget, but to reserve dollars in this year's budget. I think that's what Robert was alluding to. You know, of course, subject to your future direction and approval. But we would just reserve it with the idea that you may want to spend those dollars and appropriate them in this year's budget.
Okay, so no commitment for future?
Yeah, and if we go through with this year, I mean, that's a separate conversation, but further funding for future years, we should be talking about the same process. So I would like, well, one, I don't want to spend hours debating over $1 million anymore when we have $150 million budget. We have more serious things to talk about, more ways to spend money. So we need to move beyond. So I would like to see this broken down, if we want to keep the cap at $1,017, into some sort of categories, to show what type of services they're providing for, if that's children's services, if that's reentry, if that's job training. So we can look at what percentage we're putting into each one of these categories and where they fit. And if we're happy with that percentage, I would agree with Commissioner Richardson to let, let's allocate accordingly for this year. And I'll unequivocally not support doing that another year after, and we should have a process in place. And I'm hoping we would all stand firm on that if we can get to at least a process we're all happy with, and then we don't have to have people come to us one-on-one and spend, you know, an hour debating over $20,000 here, $50,000 here, while we can set a much broader scope of where we want to see the city going and what programs and categories of programs we want to fund rather than specific individual entities.
Commissioner Bryant.
On Jeremy's, Commissioner Matlow's recommendation, I thought the city had already established these categories. Are we saying that we want to take those that are in other and place them in a category or have them totally reorganize what's on here for other types of categories? Because I don't think we need to do that, but I do think we need to allow the city manager to come back, as he stated before, with the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I think largely, the public safety is a category, so that would be, you know, 40% or whatnot, that would be. But some, especially in the others, Commissioner Bryant, or Commissioner Williams-Cox mentioned, not knowing what some of these organizations do. So if we know at least what category they fall in and, you know, what description, and then if it's, we want to spend more on public safety than quality of life. And I'm not saying we should do that, per se, but at least have some sort of system and metric that's not us picking an individual program, but saying, this is the direction we want to spend this $1 million on. And that's 40% public safety, 10% quality of life. I don't think we can get to 40% other. We need to break that down into some sort of category and metric and then approve that.
Okay, so it's just moving those that are under other?
Well, yeah, ideally, I guess.
Questions?
Where are we?
All right, Robert, bringing in for a landing.
Sure. We understand that we'll bring this back with some additional information in a matrix format, providing percentages, better descriptions, and then some recommendations on maintaining a budget that we can, we can live with for a fiscal, for a fiscal year '20, a balanced budget. Next steps is our last, just, I think I've spoken to these June 5th and July 10th. At the June 5th meeting, we'll really start to talk about the process. There are some very strict state law requirements of what we go through from a process perspective, and we want to be, make sure you're fully informed of those. Our opportunity then would be to get your feedback on our, on our proposed budget, June 5th, bring it back with those, with any changes, July 10th. After the, after the break, then we would come back in September and 25th, September 11th and 25th, follow the public hearing process that's established by the state. I've listed some other key dates of when we are looking for revenue feedback from the state and from the property appraiser. And otherwise, thank you. Thank you for your feedback.
First of all, I'm going to add, go ahead.
I was just going to add, I think it would be important for, well, the new commissioners who would want that, I've had the opportunity to sit through it myself, but to have either a written and/or verbal briefing on the Community Human Service Partnership Program.
Yes.
I think that's going to be important. If we don't do a workshop, that they at least have an opportunity to have a verbal and/or written briefing on the history of that.
I would like for it to be a workshop, because we need the community to know how this is happening. What's the process? They need to know what the process is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow?
I'm happy to have a workshop. I think we should also include, if we're looking to the future, what alternatives other communities do, if that's participatory budget or other types of systems that, so we can examine what the best fit is for our community.
Excellent. Okay, first of all, Robert, excellent job with the presentation today. This is the most important thing that we do as a city commission, is balance the budget on an annual basis and keep the city afloat. What you did today was fantastic. Raul, thank you for all your hard work in your department and everything that you do as well. Commissioners, what I'm going to ask is for the city manager to kind of bring this into a wrap-up and try to make sure that we're all on the same page, based on our conversations today, of what the direction is. This would be considered staff recommendation that I'd be looking for a formal motion to approve. Okay? And of course, we could change it if the manager says something that we did not say. But, so bring us in for a landing of what the, what the staff recommendation will be based on conversation.
Yes, sir. Robert, can you move back to slide eight? Thank you. So I'll start here, and I appreciate, this has been a very helpful conversation. We are at the last stop, as I indicated earlier, to get the feedback of the commission and key assumptions. Slide eight for me.
I think you said eight.
Yeah. Eight.
Eight. Seven, eight.
There we go. So commissioners, this was, Robert has presented to you that we estimate revenues for the general fund in fiscal year '22 to be approximately $160 million. Based on that, we had some additional items that we wanted to bring very specifically to your attention. They're shown on slide eight, numbered one through nine. We've heard support for those items. We will work to include those in the budget to be balanced. Robert, if you'll go to slide nine. We also heard thorough conversation. These total just slightly more than $1 million in outside agency funding. That's not otherwise funded in our CHSP process. We have heard support for maintaining that level of funding with the recommendation to consider other requests that we may have today already, which would necessitate a reevaluation of the funding that we provide today. We have heard that there's a preference to categorize those based on the commission's priority areas. We have some semblance of that already, but I think we can do more. We've also heard that you would like a transition conversation potentially. The CHSP process is in going into the second year of a two-year process in fiscal year '20. That gives us a year to transition, if that's your desire. We can provide you more information with a workshop on the CHSP process, but make a recommendation how we would fund outside agency funding at or about the level that we currently have included with some, categorized with some potential transition. If that's, that's what we've heard, we want to make sure we're clear on that. We'll move in that direction in a proposed budget.
Okay. Any, any changes to the staff recommendation that was just presented? Is there a motion for staff recommendation?
I'll make the motion, but I also wanted to include in the CHSP workshop, information on participatory budgeting.
Okay.
Second?
You want to define participatory budgeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a common concept that I think there's been lots of news media about in organizations that operate.
I'm getting some head shaking down here that we're not clear on.
Well, that, so I'm looking for information to be brought back to us to explain what that would look like, that other city such as New York City, the process that they use, or any other alternative process.
Could we, Commissioner?
Let's do separate.
Could we not include that? Because I know nothing about it. Before I vote on something, I want to be informed. So, but I want staff to be able to move forward, but I can't, I can't support that when I know nothing about it. And it's just being introduced for the first time this afternoon.
And Commissioner Matlow, I'm assuming that you're planning for future budget cycles?
Right.
Right. So I'm not planning, I'm asking for information on alternative processes that other communities use.
My point is, we would not be working this alternative process into this budget cycle for fiscal year proposed 1920. So why don't we take recommendations for this specific workshop topic, which is the proposed 1920, and then we'll come back for another motion right after to bring back information regarding the future processes and having a workshop on that.
As I, my understanding was the staff recommendation included a workshop on the CHSP, so we can examine it for the future. Is that incorrect?
What you are proposing with community participation is completely and totally different than the CHSP process, and it is a much bigger discussion to have on the overall budget of the city of Tallahassee moving forward and completely transforming into a different process. I'm with Commissioner Richardson. I would feel more comfortable separating the two from the specific proposed fiscal year 1920. I'll come right back to you for a motion to bring back the information.
And for clarification, I second it, so we can have this discussion. But I think that it's incumbent upon us to do our own homework right now, since we, this has been introduced. We can do our own research to find, find that information out and then come back and determine if we still need further, more information or collaboration to be able to talk about it. But I'm wholeheartedly supporting the motion to accept what the city manager said as far as staff recommendations.
Okay.
Let's amend it to include that, just staff recommendation.
Yeah, just, okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Excellent. That passes five zero. Commissioner Matlow?
Well, I will allow for time for people to be educated on that and see if it seems like something they would be interested in. I wanted to add one final point, because we spent so much time on, on outside agencies' funding. We've talked about affordable housing in the past, and I would really like to see, as we're developing our strategic plan, how that plays into that and get some information brought back on that. And I want to commend the, the funding we received for youth programs like Tempo, and also wanted to just highlight the summer program we're having right now, the Tallahassee Futures Leaders Academy, which is a great public-private partnership that goes out and puts young people who may otherwise also get into trouble and into jobs. So I think, you know, that's a great program, and that's all I got.
All right. Seeing nothing else, it's 3:10. We'll be back at four o'clock for the regularly scheduled meeting. We stand adjourned.